If you have the recorder on.
Yes, we're ready, Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, welcome everyone to the Port of Olympia Remote Commission Work Session of May 17th at 2021. The Port of Olympia is working diligently to address a threat posed by COVID-19, Thurston County, the State of Washington, and the United States. On March 16, 2020, the Commission adopted Rule Resolution 2020-03 authorizing certain emergency powers in light of the COVID-19 outbreak, including invoking emergency applicable emergency exemptions to meeting notice requirements and location restrictions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Pursuant to that resolution, the Port of Olympia Commission is conducting today's meeting remotely. The Board is following the guidance from Thurston County Health Department to take all efforts to prevent the spread of this virus and is acting in the interest of the safety and welfare of the public, the community, and our employees to limit its spread. With that, is there a motion to approve today's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve today's agenda. Before that, I'd like to make a motion to add two agenda items. The first agenda item is farewell to Aspen as item one, and that'll take about two or three minutes. And the second item is called Capital Lake, the Shoots Estuary Draft EIS Review. I'd just like to discuss with my fellow commissioners if we have the in-house talent or not, or need to go outside for review of the draft EIS, which, as Commissioner Zeta noted in this morning's DES meeting, is a short window for response to that draft EIS. And I'm not saying we need a response, but I would just like to be ready. So my proposal at this moment, though, is to add as item five, 10 minutes for a Capital Lake, the Shoots Estuary Draft EIS discussion. Do I have a second for those two amendments to the agenda?
I'll second.
Second for the purpose of discussion.
So it's been moved and seconded for purpose of discussion.
Can't hear you.
Yeah. Oh. You cannot hear me?
I can hear you.
So Commissioner Downing's not on, but the discussion I'd like to have is, I agree with the first item. The second item, I think.
Commissioner Zeta, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, but we can also hear, we can also hear Commissioner Downing, so we're not sure.
I can't hear anybody.
Audio.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here. Thanks.
Sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Sorry about the audio thing. I agree with the first item. The second item, I think we can just incorporate it into item four.
Thank you, Commissioner Zeta. So it's been moved and seconded that that we accept these two agendas to today's meeting agenda. So let me review. Item one would be a couple of words for Aspen. Item two would be upcoming topics and agenda. Item three would be briefing from Olympia Community Solar. Item four would be acceptance of reports. Item five would be Capital Lake, the Shoots Estuary EIS update. And item six would be Capital Lake, the Shoots Estuary Draft EIS Review. All in favor, please say aye.
Okay, can I? Well, I'll second that for purpose of discussion. I just wonder if I might, Commissioner, why we couldn't all cover it under four, or what would be number five was the the update from Sam as well as the review. If that, those are all the same subject matter, so I think we could just put them into one.
Thank you. I accept those. Okay, thank you. I accept those friendly amendments from the, to my amendment from the two commissioners. So now, the amended agenda that I'm suggesting is to add one item, which is farewell to Aspen as number one, and the other four items remain the same. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have an agenda. So the first item is, okay, we can all break out our handkerchiefs and start crying because, you know, apparently Aspen has found greener pastures. And I'm not sure my fellow commissioners are aware, but Aspen has a wonderful opportunity to go work for Microsoft. So we'd just like to say thank you, Aspen, for your service, helping us out, and we're certainly going to miss you.
I would.
Commissioner Downing.
I would like to second that. I think Aspen has done a great job of keeping us on task and has been very effective in corralling us. And I appreciate the effort that she's put forward, and I wish her all the best. Maybe she's going to be taking over for Bill Gates sometime. I'm not sure, but I hope so. There we go. Thank you.
Aspen, it sounds like you wanted to say something. Go ahead, please.
Oh, I was just saying, thank you, Commissioners. I've learned a ton working with you guys, so I really appreciate the opportunity, and I will definitely miss everybody at the port, but I hope to keep in touch.
Well, we're going to miss you too, Aspen. We've been grateful for all your help, and congratulations on your good new job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aspen. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. So next topic then is the upcoming topics and agenda items, and Sam, you're leading us off.
Great. Okay, thank you, Commissioners. And next slide, please. So we have coming up for next Monday at our regular Commission Business Meeting. For action, we will have the on-call legal consultation and services contract, the economic benefit study contract, and Resolution 2021-02 Commission rules. These have all been had an advisory previously. Up for advisory at this meeting will be an interlocal agreement establishing the Olympia Sea Level Rise Response Collaborative. And we'll also have our Q1 financial report as an advisory at this meeting. Next slide. For Monday, June 7th, we will have a presentation regarding land acknowledgement. This will be presented by Chairman of the Squawks Island Tribe, the Honorable Chris Peters. We'll also be looking at the draft for the update to the Commission Code of Conduct and Ethics Resolution, and then a Fuel Doc update from TJ Quant. And next slide. And for the 14th, so far, the only thing we have on that that agenda is in bringing back for action that interlocal agreement establishing the Olympia Sea Level Rise Response Collaborative. I think that's it. Oh, we do have our unassigned work session and meeting topic, so I think we have assigned everything at this point. So I think we've made our made our way down the list, and they're either we have had them, or we have them on the schedule.
Thank you, Sam. Did I miss really the parliamentarian topic? We've covered a little bit, and that's really not a future work session. I think, where do we leave that? Are you doing some research on that?
Right. Jerry's doing some additional research and bringing some things back for that one. For an on-call contract.
Comments from the Commissioners besides me?
I don't know if you can see me, Commissioners Downing. It was raised my hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had, I didn't have the full screen on there for a second. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd like to see what my fellow Commissioners think about the possibility of having a work session on a diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. Other ports are moving forward on this, and we can look at them for examples. I think we should take a look at this in a work session, if you agree.
Well, okay, go ahead, Commissioner McGregor.
I was, I was just going to say that it might be before we get this scheduled or have it on there is maybe to get some sample of what other ports have done to give us some kind of guideline so we can read it prior to getting it scheduled on any kind of a work session. I would like to see the other other documents that have been brought forward. If other ports are doing, I'd like to read a little bit up on that stuff. So maybe we could ask the Executive Director to obtain copies and disseminate them to us.
Sure. Port of Tacoma is taking a lead and other ports as well, so I'd say start with Port of Tacoma.
I think that, thanks, Commissioners, Commissioner McGregor. I think that's a good suggestion. You know, I'm all in favor of this type of thing. And, you know, although I think that, you know, our port does an excellent job in these areas, perhaps there's room for improvement. So I'm certainly open to looking at this. And so, so as Commission President, Commissioner Zeta, I think you have a thumbs up all around, and I'll work with the Executive Director to get this scheduled on the work session.
Well, we better make a motion. So I move, I move that we direct staff to get documents from other ports on diversity, equity, inclusion, and bring it to us for a work session.
I would, I will second that, but I want to make sure it's clear that I want to get those documents prior to even having it scheduled for a work session, so I have time to read them and go through them. So before we even schedule it for the work session, I would like to have copies in hand like at least 10 days before.
I move that we direct staff to research diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives at other ports, get documents to us, and no sooner than 10 days later, let's say with, and say two weeks later, have a work session on this. How's that sound?
Thanks, Commissioners Zeta, for that motion. Well, second for purposes of discussion, and my discussion is this, that we don't typically ask Commissioners, but put dates or timelines on work session items, and this one included, so.
Commissioner McGregor's putting a timeline on it, so I'm trying to be specific here.
I think what I heard was Commissioner McGregor is speaking about the chronology, meaning he'd like to see some doc documents to get some background, and then after that, schedule a work session item. So would you mind, you know, well.
So replace the two weeks and say, and then have a work session.
Had a future work session, yes.
So good. So I second that. So it's been moved and seconded that we ask, we authorize our Executive Director to do research around this issue, learning from other ports what they've done, and disseminate those materials, and then subsequent to that, schedule a work session on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any other questions or comments about upcoming topics and agenda items? Okay, great. Well, hearing none, let's move on to our next agenda item, which is a briefing from Olympia Community Solar on the Farmers Market Project. And we have a guest speaker today, Mason Rolfe from Olympia Community Solar. Welcome, Mason.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me today. Should I convert into things?
This is Aspen really quick. I just wanted to know if you want me to admit both of the other Bens, your colleagues, onto the screen as well, or should they just remain as attendees?
It's kind of their attendees.
Okay, great. I'm gonna share my screen.
Thank you so much. Well, it's good to see you all again. Good afternoon. I'm really excited to talk to you about my favorite subject, which is solar energy. And today I'm going to be providing a little update on the Hummingbird project at the Children's Museum, and a big thank you for supporting that project, and then a briefing on our new project on the Olympia Farmers Market. So slide, please. Our organization, as a reminder, we're a nonprofit. We have an office right at the corner of Fourth and Capitol above the spar, and our mission is to steward an equitable and accessible transition to clean energy. Right now, our big projects have been a solar group purchasing campaign, and we've had 63 households around Thurston County sign up to install solar through that group purchase. And and then the second one has been this new community solar project. So let's talk about how Hummingbird turned out. So slide, please. Oh, one more. Here we go. Some beautiful photos. So we enrolled Hummingbird last year. We finished enrollment in December, and the project was delayed for a few months by the museum needing a roof replacement. Their old roof was leaking pretty badly, and so the city made the investment to put on this beautiful new metal roof. And then in January and February of this year, the system was installed by A and R Solar. Here are a couple of the staff on the roof, and a slide, please. The system ended up being 301 solar panels. In total is 117 kilowatts. And to put that in perspective, that's about 12 normal households worth of solar. Another slide, please. I think this was it. Yeah. Here's the completed system. It went online on February 4th of this year, and since then, we've generated about 40 megawatt hours of electricity. So the average home will use about 10 megawatt hours of electricity every year. So in just the past three months, we've generated enough energy to power four homes for about a year. I'm super excited to see the, the production has been going up as we've been moving into the sunnier weather, and it's been super fun to watch. Another slide, please. The next is a example of how the ownership of the system turned out. So we had 14 not-for-profits participate, and they're all recognized here. And then we had 83 community participants purchased and privately owned pieces of the system. And so as these solar panels generate energy, we'll sell the energy to the Children's Museum and then disperse the value that we receive out to all of these different nonprofits and private participants. We're estimating that each person will, excuse me, each unit of the project, which represents about half a solar panel, will generate about $12 of energy a year. The whole project has about 600 units, and we expect it to generate about $12,000 to $13,000 in total per year. And so with that, I'll transition over to talk about our new project on the Farmers Market. And slide, please. I'm really excited to introduce Sunflower Community Solar. It was the market's idea to name it Sunflower because sunflowers are heliotropic, heliotropic, which means that they turn to face the sun throughout the day. And so the market wanted to say that they're turning towards sustainability, or they're turning towards a clean energy future. And in this photo, you can actually see the historic community solar project that was on the market for eight years. It was removed this past year. And slide, please. The investment that the previous members had was through the old incentive program, and those incentive payments ended this year. And so the city had a choice to take ownership or to ask for it to be removed. And so they came to us and asked if we'd be interested in replacing the system with a nice brand new one. We said yes, and so we ended up removing that old system. And another slide, please. And as part of that, we wanted to honor the legacy of that old system, which was really created and founded by a longtime market vendor, Steve Wilcox. Steve worked to organize the investors for the system. He managed all the annual meetings and put together the reports, and it was really his child of a system. And I've been talking a lot with his surviving wife, Lori Wilcox, and she, she really called, she called the Farmers Market Steve's second, second spouse, because he spent so much time and invested so much energy into it. So we wanted to honor Steve, so we're dedicating this new system to him. And any folks that want to honor his memory can make donations in his name to the Friends of the Farmers Market, which he was a founding member of. So slide, please. Yeah. So we've partnered with the Farmers Market, the city, and through a competitive procurement, we selected South Sound Solar to be the installing contractor, and they put together a really beautiful design. Slide, please. And this is what it's going to look like. So this new system is about double the size in terms of energy capacity of the old one. It's 75 kilowatts. It's 200 solar panels, and we expect its production to offset 100% of the Farmers Market's consumption. So the Farmers Market might be the first net positive energy producing market in, in Washington State, which is really exciting. And, and I just have to say that market has been an amazing partner, and we're planning to publicly release the project this Wednesday in a joint press release, so keep an eye out for that. Units of the project are going to be the same price as with Hummingbird, $300 each. We'll have about 415 units available. Each one will represent half a solar panel, and we are estimating that each unit is going to produce about $16 worth of energy every year for, for participants. A week or two ago, we opened up unit enrollment to participants of Hummingbird and our other supporters just in our network, and we've already enrolled about 10% of the system just through that initial announcement. Let's see. Other things to say about the participation? We think payback will take about 17 or 18 years, and at the end of that 18 years, the system will either be donated to the market for free, or will pay for its removal, just as the other one was. Yeah, I think that's the big things that I wanted to mention about the system itself. We also are, have invited the same sort of group of nonprofits to join in. We have 10 participating nonprofits. I believe they're on the next slide. Next slide, please. And maybe one more. And each of these nonprofits are an eligible recipient if you, if folks would rather donate units than participate themselves for that whole 18 years. And the idea is that people can make a tax deductible donation to one of these nonprofits and have the benefits that that solar unit generates paid to the nonprofit every year. And I'm super grateful of all these nonprofits they're going to be supporting with outreach and, and have just been really wonderful partners. So I think that's everything I wanted to say about Sunflower. I'll close out with just saying the support from the port with Hummingbird was absolutely essential in helping getting the project built. We're still working on building the installation that's going to be installed in the museum for recognition and to educate the kids about solar. And we're going to do the same sort of thing with an installation at the Farmers Market so that all the Farmers Market visitors can learn how solar works and also see who contributed to that original project. So I think my last two slides are just a invitation to participate in Sunflower and a thank you. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mason. Really good, really good. This is, you know, pretty neat that some of the biggest, most important tenants of that part of town are both involved, heavily involved in solar energy for their needs and so forth. So I'm pretty excited about that. In the Farmers Market, I was just down there, I think, yesterday. I mean, what a great community resource, and it just adds to the fact that, you know, we have a expanse, even more expansive solar array up on top of the building. So thank you. Fellow Commissioners, do you have a comment or question of Mason today?
Well, thank you, Mr. Rolfe, for that overview. It's exciting to see Hummingbird up and running, and the Sunflower project starting. My fellow Commissioners, I'm sure remember that the Port of Olympia has been a supporter of Farmers Market initiatives from the very start. Many, many commissions ago, we provided the land that the Farmers Market is on, and we've supported Farmers Market and Ag Initiatives ever since. And I hope that we will support the Sunflower project as we did the Hummingbird project. And I would love for Mr. Rolfe to remind us just how we supported the Hummingbird project. I don't know if we should hear from Commissioner McGregor first or from Mr. Rolfe first.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Go ahead. I'm fine with, I'll go after he's responded, if you, if you want to, Commissioner. So I'll leave that up to your call.
Thank you, Mr. Rolfe. You want to comment? Give us a reminder of what we did involving in the Children's Museum project.
So I, from what I remember, the initial intention was that for the port to be a participant in the Children's Museum project, after the, the commission meetings, then we got a recommendation from your lawyers that the port as a public entity could not be a member of a LLC. So we ended up using the funds as a donation to one of our nonprofit participants. It's called Olympia Mutual Aid Partners. They provide services for houseless folks in downtown Olympia. And then we also had an agreement to provide the port with the renewable energy credits that are associated with the, what would have been your participation share. So we'll send the port, I believe, is about 170 megawatt hours worth of clean energy credits, which you can use to reduce your environmental footprint on paper. The good news there is that we've structured this second project to be a little bit different so that participants aren't actually member owners of the company. It's really more participants are offering us a interest-bearing loan in order to build the project. So I'd love to hear the thoughts of your lawyers, but I believe that it makes it possible for the port to be a participant.
If I can go ahead, Commissioner, I just had a couple of comments. Number one, I want to make sure I heard right. I believe you said that the Hummingbird project was like $12 a panel per year, or is that per month?
That's the estimated generation after we pay for our annual expenses. So when someone purchases one of those $300 units, they'll receive about $12 per year in payback. And that escalates over time as energy becomes more valuable.
Sure. So then, moving on to the Farmers Market, it's going to be $16 per year, if I heard correctly. So what, what, what is the difference between the two numbers? Can you kind of explain that?
Yeah. With the Farmers Market project, we have more of the project's capital is coming from more of the project's capital is coming from, I guess, grants and donations. So we're not relying on much of the, how to say, as much of the capital stack coming from participants. So that means that each unit represents a little bit more of the capacity. If we were funding the project 100% with unit sales, we'd have more around 600 or 700 units compared to what we're offering, which is 400. Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah, that's fine. And so each panel, each one of those black squares is one panel. And in there, you're selling half of it to somebody and half to another or whatever. Is that my understanding?
That's right. And one thing I didn't mention is that we're using made in Washington Solfab solar panels. They're the brand new, they're the newest version of their panels that they've come up out with. They're 380 watts apiece, I think. And they're about as tall as me, so six, six foot plus.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. That's, thank you for that. Go ahead. I'm done. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thanks, Commissioners, for your questions. So Mason, you know, please keep us informed and, you know, a good way to do that is, and I've seen several of your emails lately, but please keep us informed and, and how we might participate either individually or as a port.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Zeta.
I move that the commission direct staff to engage with Olympia Community Solar to explore options for the port to invest in the Sunflower project at the farmer's market and bring those options to the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner. So it's been moved that that we ask our executive director to engage with Olympia Community Solar to see how we might get involved in the Hummingbird project and
The Sunflower project.
Pardon me?
The Sunflower project.
The Sunflower, thank you. The Sunflower project. And, you know, compare and contrast that to our involvement in the Hummingbird project.
That wasn't really part of my request. I asked that the staff work with Olympia Community Solar to find out how we could invest in the Sunflower project and bring those options to the commission for consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner Zeta, for rephrasing and correcting me on that. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Good. So it's been moved and seconded that we ask our executive director to engage with Olympia Community Solar to bring any kind of Sunflower engagement options vis a vis the Sunflower project. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. I would, I would like to make a comment, if I could, before we get off this subject. And that is that if we do have any involvement moving forward, we'd have to look at 2022 for a budget number. So I don't know if that fits into the timeframe, but at this point, we don't have funds in the budget for this year for something like this. So we would have to give it a consideration for next year if, as a, it's more likely to have to happen during that period. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Good. Well, that, that begs a follow up question of me to Mr. Rolfe. And that is with this Sunflower project still be in motion going into 2022?
Yeah, I think if that was the timing, it'd be fine. Our current plan is to enroll throughout the summer and shoot for a October 1st installation. But with the way our, our funding for these projects work is the, the final payment isn't due until a few months after installation is complete. So I'm sure it'll work out.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Mason, for joining us today. Appreciate, always good to hear from you and your projects. Appreciate that. And thank you, fellow commissioners, for your comments. Very well. Okay, then back to you, our executive director, Sam. Acceptance of reports is the next item on our agenda today.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. And now to turn to the, let me need to adjust my view here. One second. Okay. Okay. So we are here today to discuss the proper disposition of reports according to Robert's Rules of Order. Next slide, please. I've added this slide to the packet and this is just a reminder that Lieutenant Henry Martin Robert has a basis in Washington state history. And that, first that we have, the Port of Olympia applies that Robert's Rules of Orders to the governing of meetings of the commission. And as such, the commission and the staff have committed to regularly educating themselves about the proper employment of these parliamentary procedures. And as I've mentioned before, that then Second Lieutenant Robert was stationed at American Camp during the Pig War in the San Juan Islands. What I haven't mentioned before is that he was sent there as a civil engineer with the job of constructing an earthen fort now known as Robert's Readout. And while the man who eventually rose to the rank of general worked on many civil engineering projects at his career and thus has gained a certain affinity from, from me, he is best known for his authoritative work that has brought order to so many public meetings. Next slide. So the question has been asked, what is the proper action of the commission when it receives a report? And while I am certainly not a parliamentarian, I can say that depends on how you define report. Next slide. And to answer that question, one must first ask, who is the report from? So Robert's Rules Regarding Adoption or Acceptance of Reports specifically applies to reports from a committee of the body. In this case, the body or, or the commission may vote to adopt or, or accept a report in, in which case from, from a committee of itself, in which case it has the effect of endorsing the statement and making the assembly assume responsibility for the statements made in the report. So you have a committee and that is the, the POCCAC. So to, to look at how this would work with the POCCAC, and I think that this has been a question before. And, you know, we've come up with the language of what are the products of, of the POCCAC? And so the POCCAC produces one of four types of products, either a report or a white paper, a policy recommendation, a project recommendation, or advice to the executive director. So the, the alternative to accepting or adopting a report is just to receive it. So in the case of a white paper or report, I think it would be most appropriate for the commission to receive that. And you don't need to make a motion to do that. You can, you know, verbally or not note that it has been received by the commission. That way, the, the, the report stands on its own as advice and sometimes even recommendations from the, from the committee. But the, but the commission is not neither accepting nor adopting it or committing itself to the recommendations in it. The, the same would go for the executive, advice to the executive director. And in this case, you know, we're just, I am totally open to, to advice from, from the, the POCCAC and have really enjoyed working more closely with them this past few months. And so, but the commission would, would not need to take, take any motion on that. You can just receive their advice and pass it along to me. I've made the commitment that I will come back to the commission and let you know what, what we've done with it. But there's no official action required. In the case of a policy recommendation or a project recommendation, I don't think you need to either, you can receive that, no, no motion necessary. And, and then you can direct it over to the professional staff to then bring it back to you in form of official language. So in the case of a policy recommendation, if they recommended policy changes, then I can work with the in-house counsel and another staff and bring it back to you on the regular business schedule. And that's where you, you consider and take official action on it. In the case of a project recommendation, what would likely happen then is that if it's a larger project, it would go on the capital budget. I could then, you know, get further refined cost estimates and put it on the, the capital budget project list for consideration in the capital budget. So this is, so this is the action, this is the one committee that, that you have and what you would do with reports from them. Next slide. For documents that do not come via committee of the commission, it's helpful to recall the governance structure, foundational documents, and how the commission effectively gives direction to the organization. Of note, the commission adopts the comprehensive scheme of harbor improvements, the strategic plan, and the annual budget. The commission may also adopt a master plan that designates specific uses of port property. But for other reports and things that, that, that are coming, we, we very seldom ask you to adopt something, we sometimes will ask you to accept a report. And I'm going to talk with you about kind of these, these unusual documents in the form of vision documents that have come forward. Next slide. So then it could be helpful to, to look at what action the commission takes for foundational documents. So for the comprehensive scheme, the, the master plan and the strategic plan, again, the, the commission adopts those. For the annual budget, the, the commission adopts those. And then we, we use the, we're authorized then to work on projects. I'm going to zoom my window up here so I can see it a little better. So then we get to the issue of these, the, these vision plans. And this is where it's been, they're, they're just a bit out of the norm because they're not a master site plan. They're not, they're not designating or looking at, at different land uses or committing the, the, the commission to, to land uses under that, which is typically what a, what a master plan does. They're also not a comprehensive scheme that's statutorily required to be, be adopted. But we also think that it's not appropriate for the commission to just receive the report because really what we're, we're hoping for in these, with these vision plans is for staff to work with the community to bring forward the, 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 the vision and say, this is what we're going to be working on, you know, unless you tell us, tell us otherwise. And so that's why we've asked the commission to accept these reports, knowing that you'll actually have other actions before you, before we get to leases or actual construction projects, et cetera. So in this case, the commission would accept the report and then the staff uses those to go out and market the properties, look for partnerships, et cetera. Next slide. And that's, that, that's about it for my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that, of how we view it as staff. I think the other thing to remember is that, you know, when we are bringing things to the commission, we think well ahead of time of what's the actual action that, that we're asking. And so we consult with legal counsel on that of, you know, is this something that we actually need the commission to adopt? Is it something that they need, you know, a contract that they need to approve? Or are they authorizing us? So we think through, through a lot of that ahead of time. But I know that as we've all been learning more about Robert's Rules, this question came up and Commissioner McGregor put it on our list of topics for work sessions. So I dug into it a little bit more and happy to answer questions or have further discussion.
Sam, okay. Ask my fellow commissioners, is that all totally clear or do you have any questions? Commissioner Zeta.
I think it was on page 130 of Ann McFarland's retreat notes that she provided to us. She said, do not vote to approve or accept reports such as POCCAC reports.
And, and again, that's where I'm getting back to, it depends on how you define, define a report.
Well, right, Commissioner Zeta, and I thought that we reviewed the POCCAC operating rules and we came up with those four divisions of the type of POCCAC report. And I have that slide in front of me, but two of them require no action, just to accept. And then one is direction to the executive director and one is, for example, a project recommendation. Do we go forward or not? And it doesn't have to be, I mean, that could be a independent commission action. We just happen to have the benefit of POCCAC analysis ahead of time for that. So.
Quite right, Commissioner Downing, in fact, and McFarland recommends that it should always be an independent commission action. She was explicit on about page 130 of her materials that we should not accept or approve such reports that we should simply file them and make up our own minds and make our own recommendations.
Well, I can't. Is that in conflict with our executive director's slide? Can you put that slide back up, Sam, of the disposition of POCCAC reports?
Right. Now, I, I don't see it as being, being in conflict. Again, what, what I'm saying is that for the white paper or report, you would do exactly what Ann says, that you, you just receive it. There's no motion necessary for, for that. For policy recommendations and project recommendations, you'd want to go ahead and, and direct staff to bring them back to you. But yeah, it's perfectly in keeping with, with Ann McFarland's recommendations.
So just so we're real clear, that receiving reports and directing staff is not the same as accepting or approving
Correct.
POCCAC reports. That's not something that we should do.
And, and you, you're exactly correct. They are not the same thing.
Okay. Well, can you go back to the, the slides, the next slide after the POCCAC thing? When you talk about, oh, the next slide, one more. You talk about this one. So you're really not advising us on any Robert's Rules. You're pointing out the difference between what we do with the POCCAC, what we do internally with various things that are either tradition or requirements. Okay.
Good. So we have asked the POCCAC to take a look at their operating rules, which are covered under, I believe, under a resolution. And we've asked them to come back with recommended changes. They would like to see that administers how they operate and how they function. And so when they come back with that policy, then we would direct the executive director at that point to either bring forth another resolution with the suggested changes or the commission would make direction to the, to the executive director that we don't think this should be in the resolution and we would make that decision. But, but we have asked them to do a policy recommendation. And in the past, we've asked them to do project recommendations. But I think when they come back with those, we need to take and do something with them. Either we're either going to reject it all or direct the executive director to bring together a resolution that melds what they're suggesting into the existing, for this sake, the operating rules. So I'm fine with the way it's been presented.
Well, that's a little dicey, Commissioner McGregor, because if we were to direct the executive director to bring back a policy that melds the POCCAC recommendations into our existing policy, that would be pretty much the same as accepting or approving the report. So we should be making our own recommendations based on the study that we, and the information we get.
I think that's what I was inferring, Commissioner. Maybe I just didn't put that out there in that, in a, in a statement that.
Great. Then we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
That's great.
That's fine.
Good. Interesting. Good. Interesting. Well, I don't have anything else. I appreciate you clarifying this and keeping it in front of us, Sam. So we can do the right thing as we run the port business in conjunction with these kinds of things on your slide as well as anything that's coming out of the POCAC.
Great.
Good. Thank you. All right then. Moving on to our next agenda item, which is the Capital Lake Deschutes Estuary EIS update for their own Sam Giveney.
Great. Thank you once again, commissioners. I'm here to provide an update on the Capital Lake Deschutes Estuary draft EIS and want to review in particularly where we're at, where I sit on the funding and governance work group. But to review the the process overall, make sure that everyone is prized of the timeline. Next slide, please. As you are undoubtedly familiar, the state has been working on with a number of stakeholders looking at four different options and are have engaged the services of consultants to to look at these alternatives and to analyze them. They've also had quite an extensive public engagement process and we have participated on three of 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 those work groups. And I'll go over those in a little bit more detail. Next slide, please. In general, here is the timeline and I'll I'll go over this in in more particular, but we are the the draft EIS is expected to be issued on June thirtieth of of this year. So they're kind of in the final countdown for for that. And then after that, there will be a comment period and then a reconvening of the a work group to of the various work groups to look at what other types of modifications or things would be needed to proceed into the final EIS, which is expected to be in the summer of twenty twenty-two. Next slide. I put this up up not to go over it in detail, but just to illustrate that it has been a very comprehensive and detailed public outreach process. And this just puts it on timeline, all the different groups that the state has been I've been working with to try to incorporate their input. Next slide. So first is the executive work group and the executive work group includes represent representatives from governmental partners. The members provide policy level feedback to the project and represent the interests of their constituents. They are tasked with providing a comprehensive view of the project issues, considering policy, community and technical as- aspects and remaining amenable to feedback from other interested parties. We have participated in this for quite some time and Commissioner Zeta has been our representative on this group and I believe that you just had a meeting this morning, if I'm not not mistaken. Great. Next slide. And that was the the meeting that happened today. We'll go on the next slide. The technical work group includes representation from the resource agencies, affected tribes and other entities that would have regulatory or permitting authority in phase three or would require close coordination regarding potential mitigation measures. Members have been identified by enterprise services or the executive work group and may be supplemented by additional regulatory and permitting entities if deemed necessary. These members provide natural resource and permitting expertise and technical review of project material and issues related to long-term management of Capital Lake Deschutes Estuary and port staff has participated on this technical work group. Next slide. And the last meeting, which I was in attendance at, was the May fourteenth, just this last Friday. Next slide. And then the funding and governance work group. They convene the funding governance work group, Department of Enterprise Services did, to fulfill the legislative proviso elements regarding identification of a conceptual option for shared funding and governance for long-term management of Capital Lake and Deschutes Estuary. The funding governance work group is comprised of taxing authorities or taxing districts in the project area. The Washington State Department of Natural Resources also has special interest in the governance discussion, given its legal responsibility to manage the state-owned aquatic lands such as Capital Lake Deschutes Estuary. We've also been working on the various models for potential shared funding and governance and committed to continuing the work to evaluate and develop a a model to to bring forward. That work is not not yet complete. We will pick that up back up after the draft EIS has been completed. Next slide, please. So at our last meeting of the funding and governance work group, we reviewed the discussion on governance models and the strengths and weaknesses for each option and then enterprise services provided a recommendation for an interlocal agreement as the option that best fits the needs of the project. They then presented a draft interlocal agreement and reviewed the content sections, assumptions and and entertained questions. Purpose of this exercise was to identify key assumptions that would need to be confirmed by the funding and governance work group in an interlocal agreement and to demonstrate the nature, content and the level of detail of an interlocal agreement. So the issues that were addressed in there was membership, how to withdraw from or terminate memberships at in the agreement, option to to form a separate entity. For example, a nonprofit, an LLC miscellaneous corporation, et cetera. That the body is subject to the would be subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. What potential funding mechanisms there might be, what voting requirements might be, whether or not a public development authority could be formed within the interlocal agreement. What dispute resolution mechanisms were and other such such topics. So we've had a brief look at that. There's nothing ready for to to bring to the commission for its consideration as in its very early formation. And again, we'll be picking this work back up after the the draft EIS is issued. Next slide. So the next steps are that the draft EIS is expected out on on June thirtieth. These are the contents expected in that draft EIS. And we can go to the next slide. So then in July and and August, public outreach will include a public comment period. It's been extended from a thirty-day public comment period to a forty-five day public comment period. There will be online open house available throughout the comment period, work group meetings in early July, interest group and jurisdictional briefings as requested in July, an online public meeting, e-newsletters and other notices, and they're also considering a possible open house around the lake and outdoor open house. I don't know if they discussed that in today's meeting. Next slide. So then immediately after the draft EIS, we'll be reconvening in in work groups, looking at the key findings, asking clarifying questions and review the process and engagement opportunities. And then after the public comment period, I'll be looking to to the preferred alternatives, selection criteria and what the next steps are. Next slide. And with that, I should have left plenty plenty of time for you to have a discussion on the other topic that you wish to cover, Commissioner Downing, which is central review by the port and comment if necessary.
So I'm happy to give the commission an update on this morning's meeting if you would like.
Thank you, Commissioners. Oh, and thank you, Sam, for that update for the the Capital Lake Deschutes Estuary EIS process. I I suspect we have a few things to talk about. Go ahead, Commissioner Zeta, if you'd like to summarize. You know, I was able to listen in on this morning's meeting, but you were there firsthand. By via Zoom, so please continue. Give us a summary.
I was there for the I was there for the whole meeting and Sam asked about the the lake tour. There's going to be a guided lake tour, not in person, but there will be signage with information about the alternatives and the criteria around the lake. And that will be part of a very extensive public process, inviting people to learn more about the draft EIS and provide feedback. So the two main things we talked about this morning in the executive work group were the public process, which, as you've seen, is quite extensive and extended from thirty days to forty-five. And the the main thing that we worked on were the criteria. You will probably remember that for the phase one report, the pre which guided the EIS work, there were four project goals, water quality, sediment management, ecological functions and active community use. Those four project goals have been grouped together in alternative selection criteria A. That's criterion A, and there are five other criteria, which we discussed and we did a ranking exercise on them this morning. I won't go into the details of the other five criteria. I'll just tell you what they are. Criterion B is other environmental disciplines with significant findings, impacts and benefits. Criterion C is environmental sustainability, that is, the ability to provide net environmental benefits over a thirty-year time horizon and the level of active management required to achieve the project goals. And remember, the project goals are those first four I told you about, which are now called criterion A.
Could you repeat those, please? Sorry, I'm jotting them down. Those criterion A, please.
Sure, I'll I'll have this document sent to you, okay?
No, that's not okay. Could you just repeat them right now? So I'm trying to stay with you. We're having a conversation right now. And I I wasn't able to jot that down this morning either. So if you could just take a second, Commissioner.
Okay, you want the four project goals in criterion A?
Right, please.
Okay, so these were the original project goals which guided the EIS work. Those were and those project goals were developed with extensive community input and input from all the partners, from us, the cities, the county and lot and Squawson Island Tribe. So the original performance goals, which taken together comprise criterion A, the performance against project goals are water quality,
Got it.
sediment management.
Okay.
Ecological functions.
Okay.
And active community use, for example, recreation.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that minute.
So that is just one of six now.
Right.
So that is A and then B is other environmental disciplines with significant findings. Oh, and let me just remind you, Commissioner Downing, those four project goals that I just repeated for you are also in the Phase One Proviso Report, which was published in twenty nineteen and those goals were developed in twenty sixteen. And those goals are in the letter that this port signed to the governor in twenty sixteen. So they will look familiar to you. Criterion C is environmental sustainability. Criterion D is economic sustainability. Criterion E is construction impacts. And criterion F is regional sustainability, which is basically ex- regional acceptability to the workgroup members, the community and the state capital committee. There was a suggestion that we call it acceptability instead of regional sustainability. So we discussed those at some length and we rated them against each other. And just to give you a the bottom line right up front, the original project goals, criterion A, were rated the highest because they are the overarching guiding criteria and have been all along. And they kind of encompass everything else. And they were, of course, developed with lots of community input. And we will have lots more community input, including in July, the DES and Floyd Snyder would like to come to a port work session and give us a briefing. So I have asked our staff to set that up with them at one of our work sessions in July or August, but I know that August can be a little dicey with vacations.
Thanks, Commissioner, for that update on this morning's meeting. So any questions, Commissioner McGregor, at this point, before I suggest how we handle looking at the draft EIS? So you want to unmute yourself? Thanks.
Darn it, darn it. Anyway, sorry. When when is the final EIS supposed to be back? I mean, when they're sending out the draft, they're doing all this. When are we supposed to get the final? Here here's the response.
About a year from now, in twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thanks.
So there won't be a preferred alternative until then. Right now, there's still the three main alternatives. Capital Lake, restored estuary or a lake estuary hybrid. And then, of course, every EIS requires that the no change alternative be evaluated, though the no change alternative would be in violation of lots of laws and regulations. They still have to evaluate it.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Commissioner Zeta, for that summary of this morning's meeting. I was happy to see the option A floating to the top as one commissioner. I was happy to see option A floating to the top because water quality, sediment management, ecological function and active community use pretty much encompasses that, well, as you say, the criteria that were established early on in this process and are are still extremely important, I think. So so my concern is that that the draft EIS is coming out on June thirtieth or no later than June thirtieth. And then we have the public has forty-five days of public comment. And then the public comment period is closed and the DES goes back to work in terms of evaluating the public comment and and using things like the selection criteria and prioritizing these different interest points into a weighing weighing and coming up with an alternative. So, you know, I'm concerned that I personally don't have the skills to look at what I'm going to guess is a three hundred-page report, just to pick a number. I haven't been told how big the report's going to be, but I'm guessing it will be. I'll take a bet. It's one hundred to five hundred pages in that neighborhood. And so it so my situation as I view it at or the situation as I view it at Port of Olympia is number one, we don't have an environmental director. And if you recall, our environmental director, past environmental director, was pretty plugged into this whole Capital Lake slash Deschutes Estuary project. We've lost that expertise. We don't have, at the present time, we don't have the in-house talent to pick that up. I think that as a body, the Port of Olympia might well want to weigh in on the draft EIS in a uniform function. So there's three of us commissioners. And so how do we discuss that and come to some sort Discuss that and come to some sort of agreement. So given that fact, and given the fact that it's forty-five days, it's not a long time period. You know, I would like to ask. Our executive director to research and see what. Any kind of environmental consultants that could help us formulate a view. I don't want to say the word response, but just a view of this draft EIS. And so if we're in a position to take a position, or if we feel the need to take a position, well, then we have some. Some valid input, so I just don't feel qualified to review this draft EIS and. Leave it alone. So I'm, I'm proposing the idea for discussion of, of whether or not. You know, we can do that and. You know, what that might look like, because, and I'll bring it up, it's coincidental, I'm just, I got you, Commissioner Zeta, one second. It's coincidental that Sam is bringing this to our attention today because it's very timely and this draft EIS is right on the corner, so. I think we should be thinking of it ahead of time rather than once the forty-five day window starts. Zeta.
So. I will be reading the whole report, knowing Commissioner McGregor, he probably will too. And. I think that if we. Get DES and Floyd Snyder into a work session as soon as possible at our earliest opportunity in July. They will give us a briefing, and that will give you a heads up, and you can start asking questions then. If we need another briefing later, they can come back in again. They have the technical expertise, they have the independent. Experts that have been doing this all along, and it's their job to answer our questions. That's what we've been paying for all along. To try and scrounge up another environmental expert outside on really short notice. I, doesn't sound like a great idea to me. We'd have to pay a bunch of money, and we've been paying money. For this process, for the independent experts hired by the state. They're not taking sides on any of these options, they know the details, and they are good communicators. I think we should take every advantage of their expertise and their availability. They're making themselves available to us, they want to brief us, they want to answer our questions, and that's their job. And they're getting paid for it right now, and we're helping pay for them.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yes, indeed, we have. Sunk, you know, some of our own dollars, the taxpayers have sunk many of their own dollars into this multimillion dollar study. The, we're, we're at a kind of a crossroads as a port commission, which is. Neither one of the three of us are going to be around when. When and if the proposed alternative begins to be implemented, and I would say that. Sorry, that that is a big F, because as we know, Capital Lake. Studies have been going on for at least a couple of decades, and so, you know, we're talking about the legacy of the Port of Olympia and. Doing the right thing at this crossroads. Again, we won't be around for the outcome. But it's our responsibility as this particular port commission to do due diligence in anything we. Basically say or do, which is the, again, the idea that Port of Olympia will take a position during public comment. On aspects of the report. I, I think it's due diligence is important on our behalf, because, for example, this morning. You can't always control how the DES is managing things, because Commissioner Zeta, for example. DES asked for input in prioritizing these different outcomes, they didn't say, you know. Here's, here's a template for prioritizing, please go back to your council or commission. Talk it over and then come back to us with your ideas. They just put you on the spot and they said, here, please prioritize these. Different points, and so, you know, there's a little bit of a, I feel like a little bit of lack of. Lack of representation on the, when, when stuff like that happens, not, not you, Commissioners Zeta, you're doing a great job, but. Lack of representation from the standpoint of commissions and councils, and therefore the public on, you know, how the. Preferred alternative is arrived at, so I would like, personally, I would like an impartial person to review the draft. EIS and certainly not go out and do water quality measurements all over again, certainly none of that, but just say to us. Yes, this is a. Very well represented report and the. The way they've laid it out and the studies that they're undertaking are going to assure us that the best option floats to the top.
So I think it's.
I got to respect our executive director had her hand up a while ago, so.
I need, I will reply to you, and Commissioner McGregor should also have a turn before I do.
Yeah, thank you. So let's go, Sam, and then Commissioner Zeta, and then Commissioner McGregor.
Great, and thank you, Commissioner, and I just wanted, and some was a clarifying question for. Expenditures that may have happened before I joined the port, but I believe that our participation and any funding has gone solely for the. Funding and governance work group, so it's looking at that very specific aspect of it, so. You know, I, and I, I believe that to be the case previously as well, I don't think that, that the Port of Olympia has actually paid for the. Analysis of, and the, and the scientific. And hydraulic modeling and things like that, but their, their client is indeed enterprise services and. And should, should the commission decide to, to go this direction, that there, there are environmental consultants that regularly. It's, it's not a unusual thing for an environmental consulting firm to review an EIS and. In particular, look at the, the various. Technical aspects of it and regulatory frameworks, et cetera, that is a, not an uncommon scope of work for, for consulting. Environmental consulting groups.
Thank you, Sam. Commissioner Zeta.
I think it's Commissioner McGregor's turn first.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yeah, I, I just want to say that Capital Lake has been around and what to do with it. Since Clamp was born and Clamp was put to rest, and during that, about ten, twelve year period, I can't remember exactly how long it was in. Being handled, nothing came of it, spent over two million dollars in studies and they sat on the shelf. This is a big elephant in the room for a lot of people, for a lot of communities, for a lot of. Different entities and what they happen to it, and, and the port has many impact. Or is going to be impacted, and I have many concerns about how we're going to deal with those impacts, and so. Once we get the, I guess, the draft EIS, I would like a chance to read it. Give it some time for it to soak in, so I can come up with my questions, I mean, we've all been involved with this whole process. For many, many years, we've got a lot of vested interest in making sure that we come up with something that works for the community, but also. Has our investment of what are we doing at the port, because the flow of. Of sediment is a big, big concern, not only for us, but a lot of the marinas. And I know that there's other groups working on this as well, so I'd like to get a real good look at it first and then. Perhaps have a, and then kind of like a third party just kind of review what's being said in there or what's being hosted. Floyd Snyder, not to say that they haven't done a good job, but they've been involved from day one with Clamp and have brought it through there and done studies and. And that kind of stuff, so they, they've been heavily involved with it. So I'd just like to see, you know, sometimes standing too close to the forest, you can't see the trees, I guess that would be the. Analogy I would make, and I would just like to have a, a chance to review and a chance maybe to get. Some discussion with a professional. Person that knows a lot more about this and the science involved than I do, so, thank you.
Thanks, I think Commissioner Zeta, did you have anything else, or?
Yeah, I, I, I hear that you're concerned about. Independence and about the port's perspective being represented fairly. I want to remind you, Commissioner Downing, that when. The consultants this morning asked, what are the priorities of our agencies? That I said, current port leadership prioritizes sediment management and navigation. Now, you know, that's not my personal priority, but I know that's the port's priority.
Thank you, I heard that, thank you.
Yeah, so. As to the failure to make a decision in Clamp, DES and Floyd Snyder are well aware of that, and. That's why they are emphasizing that this process be a process that is acceptable. And involving everybody, including the port, including the tribes. Including the people, lots of different stakeholders, they have that community sounding board. And that's why they have such an extensive community engagement process and have had since. The very beginning, since the proviso report, so they are. It doesn't depend on us as individuals, Commissioner Downing, yes, port leadership will be changing. It'll be changing next year, and it'll be changing in the future. And the decision that's made should not depend on the individuals who are seated in any given seats. This is a community-wide process, and it's been designed as a community-wide process that shouldn't depend. On individual preferences, that's why they started out with these community-established goals. The criterion A. And I'm glad to hear that you agree that. Criterion A is the one that should rise to the top, because some of the other ones that have been articulated in this draft EIS are. How inconvenient would it be to make a change or to keep things the same? How much would it cost? And those things are being rated lower, inconvenience and cost. The group appears to be saying, we have to stick with our main goals and do what we got to do here. And get the grant money to dredge when dredging needs to be done. I think that the. It's clear that no matter what, what alternative is chosen. There'll probably have to be a dredge down the middle of Capital Lake, and there will probably have to be dredging. To some extent out in Bud Inlet, so. There's no alternative that's being chosen at this point, we're just looking at what are the values? And how do the different options weigh against those values, and they're going to listen to everybody in the process. So anyway, if you really want to go out and hire somebody to get another eye on this, fine, I think that with. Commissioner McGregor and Commissioner Zeta looking at it, you're going to get two pretty different reads on the same document. And two pretty close reads. If you want to go and spend a bunch of money on another consultant, don't spend too much, because we, as partners in this process. Are going to be asked to continue to fund the process. Last time it was sixty thousand, I expect it'll be about the same next time.
Well, thanks, Commissioner Zeta, I'm thinking, you know, I'm really thinking five, ten, fifteen thousand tops, and I would like to remind my fellow commissioners that. At this moment, we have no environmental director, which would be the exact person to review this for us, and, and so, you know. I, I would argue that we're not any money out of pocket, because we're not paying an environmental director right now, we have a pressing need, so. I consider this a pressing need, I mean, I really, I actually talked with. Director Chris Liu earlier today, and, you know, he's, well, he's, number one, I can see why he's director, because he's a great guy, and he's, you know, really. Represents the community and government extremely well, and he said that, you know, they are, indeed, they are trying to. Consider what the people and the governments want to do with this lake, and so they're very focused on. Getting that feedback, and I think that, you know, I feel good that they're very open to that feedback. You know, I appreciate what Commissioner McGregor said about. You know, wanting to see the report first, and all I'm asking for here is for the three of us to give our executive director. Go ahead to investigate any kind of short-term options that we may. Enlist for review of this report, not knowing how big this report is going to be, but again, guessing that it will be. You know, one to three hundred pages or something with lots and lots of data. You know, I really do believe that, you know, DES has done an exhaustive job, and so. If we want to weigh in, this is the time, we have a short window, so I'm asking my fellow commissioners for support in. You know, just doing our due diligence and, and having the tools we need to take a good look at this draft EIS when it comes out in the middle of the summer. Commissioner Zeta.
Commissioner McGregor, did you want to say something again before?
No, no, I was just gonna, gonna make a motion to have, just as what Commissioner Downing said, to direct our executive director to. To at least be prepared with something, should we decide we need to go to that direction, that's.
I have more discussion before we do a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner McGregor, for that motion before I ask for a second, I'm asked for Commissioner Zeta's comments.
I don't think we should spend money on a third party. I think we should focus on getting a new environmental director. It is really a shame that we don't have our environmental director who's been involved in this process all along. And I think our highest priority at this point should be to. Complete that search and find the right person who is going to be part of this process into the future. Instead of doing a quick last-minute search and spending a bunch of money on somebody when we have. The experts who are, who want to brief us on this, I'd say. Focus on the environmental director's search, get briefed by DES and Floyd Snyder. Right away, first work session in July, and bring them back again in August to answer any additional questions we may have.
Thank you, Commissioner Zeta, I especially like your idea about inviting Floyd Snyder, and in fact, Director Liu said that. Their staff is available for exactly this thing, so it'd be great for the Port of Olympia at some point here within the next. Month and a half to have that kind of visitation. Meanwhile, the Commissioner McGregor has. Made a motion to ask our executive director to research. Firms that might be able to review this draft EIS, should we decide to go that way. Is there a second? A second? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? So, motion passes, you know, thank you, Commissioners, and, you know. It's a little tense, because, you know, we have a short timeline, and, and the subject is coming to a head, the Capital Lake. That's been in the background for us for years, foreground, background, foreground, background, back and forth, and right now it's in the foreground, so. And it's pretty important to the point, and I respect Commissioners, you don't want to emphasize that. The Port of Olympia is only one voice, meaning, no matter how we feel about it. You know, we're some small percentage of the overall input to this process, and, you know, we make our voices heard and, and let the chips fall and. Let things play out depending on what the community wants, and so, you know, I think it's. You know, it's all good, so.
I don't know, I'm sorry, we're spending money on this when we're saying we can't spend money on community solar, and we can't spend money on a cost benefit analysis. I question our priorities, but you make the decision.
Well, that's a good point, too, Commissioner Zeta. You can't make money out of it, you can't. Something has to change if, if we do go this direction, so, anyway, but that's for a further commission meeting discussion, so. If there's no other comments, I. if there's no other comments, I think we're about done with our agenda for today. Thank you, Commissioners. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, it's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.